I heard the request and I just want you to know all the lights are on. I know there are still people checking in, but I do want to get started with a few comments. I just want to... ...enter your attention to the list of vacancies that we currently have, and I hope that some of you will take an opportunity to serve the community in any way that you can on one of these committees. We do have several vacancies on some committees that we need to fill, and it certainly would be great to see our community have a full slate of members for each of our working committees. So, take a look at the flyers. If you haven't grabbed one on the way in, wrap one on the way out, and please take a look and see what you may be able to contribute to the town or one of their committees. Want to introduce the people that are here today. On the stage, we have our town clerk who did the issue of that. At the end, Carol Maishon, who's going to handle the... ...votes and slides and etc. for you. Thank you. Town councilor Bill Ewig. In front of me, far left is the Finance Committee. To your right, in the center is the School Committee, and to my right, your left, the Board of Selectmen. At the podium will be our town administrator, Mr. Richard LaFawn, and I will be the moderator tonight, Ted Adams. When addressing town meeting, we have two microphones located in the aisles for those residents to speak. When approaching the microphone to speak, the proper procedure is to address the moderator as Mr. Moderator, who will then recognize you. Please respond with your full name and residential address before speaking. All questions and statements should be addressed to the moderator. The moderator will then request a response from the appropriate party. Each committee... So they'll be using the same microphones, I assume, as our... Or they can use the podium. Committee members may use the podium to address the... ...community unless you are making a personal statement. Then I would ask that you please use one of the microphones in the aisles. Moderator will be presenting each article. Please do not make any motions to dispense with the reading as a moderator will summarize as needed. This will allow our residents to understand the full effect of the article being presented. Once an article has been read, the moderator will call for a motion. It is customary for the sponsor of the article to make the motion. On a motion, a second must be made to allow any discussion or vote on the article. Anyone may second a motion by simply stating "second." Once a motion has been seconded, the moderator will open the article up for discussion. The sponsor of the article will be the first to speak. Once they are finished with their statement, the moderator will ask for any further discussion. This is your opportunity to speak on any article presented. Voters are again asked to be recognized and you can line up at the microphone. Time of discussion will be discretion of the moderator. Please limit your questions or comments to the article presented. It is my intention to let everyone who wishes to speak do so, but if the moderator feels questions or comments are simply repetitive or not relative to the article, then conversation will be halted. Once discussion has been completed, the moderator will call for a vote. The system for voting will be by electronic device. All registered voters receive the device when they enter the auditorium. When asked to vote, please do so by pressing 1A for a yes vote or 2B for a no vote. If you make a mistake voting, you may re-enter a vote by pressing the appropriate number. You may press the numbers all you want, but your device will only record the last choice you made when voting is closed. So, let us begin. It being 6:30 on this day, May 9th, 2013, and a forum being present, I call a special town meeting to order. I would make like to make a special announcement at this time and introduce our new superintendent of schools, Mrs. Malik Farin. I believe the chairman also has an announcement that he would like to make. I'm sorry, the former chairman of the board.
Former chairman of the board, Randy Becker. I just wanted to introduce Mark Rogers. He was recently elected as our new selector at this time. I also just want to thank Don Worf for having served. He's now off the board. And I'm off as chairman. Nicely upped in chair for the last four years and very much enjoyed working with the board as well as folks in town. Earl Worf has been elected as chairman, and Tom Clender as vice chairman for the board selection. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You. Now I ask if you would please rise, and I would ask the new superintendent of schools to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God and indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you please review the moderator's motions in your handouts, which I'll ask to pass by unanimous consent. One, that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant; and two, that the moderator may extend the floor to town management, staff, and any other non-voters provided that they first must be recognized by the moderator. Hearing no objection, the motions are passed by unanimous consent. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from any available funds into treasury, a sum sufficient to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereof. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article, and it is a nine-tenths required vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the following funds $2,674.95 to the town administrator unpaid bill account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices as listed below.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator, this is every year towards the end of the fiscal year that there are bills that are incurred after or just before the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, the bills for those don't come in until after July 1st, the next fiscal year.
Any other discussion?
All right.
Please use the microphone. State your name and residential address.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Borisic, 976 School Street. I'm back. Moderator, you ask us to vote with these things here. I'm in a section I can't even read what's in front of me.
I understand your concern, Mr. Borisic.
Do you have a sense of why we have no votes?
I can't answer the question. All I can tell you is that there are five or six rows right here with sufficient lighting for anyone who wishes to vote, and I'll give you a few minutes to do so if you would.
But doesn't the lighting cover this whole auditorium, Mr. Moderator?
We're not here to discuss the lighting, Mr. Borisic. We're on Article 1.
Very disappointing change for the school.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, press 2B. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. Could I have the numbers? Thank you. 125, yes. 22, no. Eighty-five percent vote. The motion does not pass. We have a motion to reconsider. We have a second.
Mr. Moderator, these bills are not going to pay anyone. It's just going to be paid perhaps on a legal action from the vendors. I said these bills are going to be paid one way or the other. It just may happen to be where there's legal action by some of these vendors to get their money from the town that has been incurred and services received. And we need ninety percent. Nine-tenths vote.
Smarter? Yes.
So it's a question, Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry. Please state your name and residential address.
Kevin Becker, 2001 Point 9.
Thank you.
So, question to the town administrator, please.
Go right ahead.
So, these are a couple of small bills that came in a little late, probably through no fault of the vendors. Could be a thousand different reasons why, but they're legitimate bills, correct?
Yes, these bills, they're for services that have been rendered to the town.
So there's absolutely no reason not to pay these bills, right?
The town does not dispute that these services were received.
Okay, so we should just vote yes and get done with this?
This is usually a ministerial act over the town meeting every year.
We did have a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second? We do. Okay. We'll have to have a voice vote to reconsider. It's a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to reconsider passes unanimously. Just wanted to make sure our electronic devices are prepared. So we now have the motion on the floor to approve the article as presented. And a second. We will now put it to a vote. Again, nine-tenths required to pass. Voting is now open. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. 137, yes. Seventeen, no. Motion does not pass. We're onto Article 2. To see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereof. The article is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board and the Finance Committee recommend favorable approval on this article, and again, it requires a nine-tenths vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the following funds $496.76 to the sewer unpaid bill account for the purpose of funding the payments of the prior year's unpaid invoices listed below.
We have a motion and a second discussion, Mr. Town Administrator.
Well, the explanation is the same as the prior for general fund unpaid bills.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
All right. All right.
Please step up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Do you want me to state my name and address again?
That would be helpful, thank you.
Joe Borisic, 976 School Street.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please save your no votes for later when it's needed. We need to pay our bills. I usually don't come to the microphone for the positive approach. And Mr. Becker can put his hand in his face all he wants, but anyways, Mr. Moderator, we need to pay these bills. Question to the moderator?
All right.
Can there be a secondary consideration for Article 1?
No.
No? How will the... Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
How will the bills from... Out of the one that wanted to be paid?
It's a question for the town administrator.
I don't know. Ladies and gentlemen, we pay our bills. The town has to pay their bills, really, honestly. Unfortunately, that we need, but for us, we don't really need. But ask you to reconsider our meeting. I can't see it. The next two articles about the unpaid bills?
Right. Right now, we're on Article 2. So let's deal with Article 2.
Let's pay the bills that are always not very much paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Moderator, Larry Nelson, 130 School Street. And I just wanted to ask for clarification that might help some of those sitting on the no side. If we do not pay the bills and they go to litigation, is it true that it would cost the town more money than if we simply paid the bills?
It'll cost more in just a half an hour of legal fees for the town than it would to pay these bills, yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Like I said on the last one, the bills are going to get paid one way or the other.
Moderator, I don't have a mic. About to head to July 15th, pay these bills.
Now, these are bills from the prior fiscal year, not the current fiscal year. Now, those are for FY 2023 bills. These are from FY 2022. Yeah, these are for the fiscal year that ended last July 30th.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article 2 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A. Opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. 148, yes. Sixteen, no. That's a ninety percent majority. Article 2 passes. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the water unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereof. Article 3 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board and the Finance Committee recommend to pass over this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move we pass over this article.
We have a motion and a second to pass over discussion. Hearing none, we're ready to put Article 3 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, 140. No, 18. The motion to pass over passes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Becker.
Camille Neal, 779 School Street. I know it's a long shot. Can I question the validity of the... ...of the electronic voting and ask for a re-hold of Article 1? Reconsideration of Article 1 with a standing vote instead of the electronic vote? I just question that there would be twenty-two people voting when it doesn't make sense... The voting no when it makes absolutely no sense.
At this point, we are have to keep the vote as it is, and we will not reconsider it. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate... ...or appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the DPW snow and ice supplies accounts or take any action thereof. Article 4 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $130,000 for funding anticipated FY '23 deficits, snow and ice deficits account.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Town Administrator.
As usual, our snow and ice budget tends to run over every year, even though it's my question as to why when we didn't have much snow. But we did have a lot of ice. We did a lot of freezing. A lot of chemicals required, and when there's chemical required, there's people that need to do it. So, we are currently facing a deficit of about $130,000.
Any other discussion?
Moderator?
Yes.
Just in case, and I know this is a simple majority, but if you do not... If this was voted no, town accountant and finance director. If this was voted no, your taxes will go up because the $130,000 is a legal deficit, and if it's not funded here by free cash, it will be added to your taxes next year. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that if this is turned down, your taxes actually go up.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
All right.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Joe Borisic, 976 School Street. For those of us who are attending for the first time here, and we have a nice crowd tonight, I would like an explanation from whomever, through the moderator. This is for Article for free cash?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Could I ask what the current free cash available is, please?
Mr. Town Administrator.
Free cash available is $3.9 million. $3.6 million.
Okay. And could we please have a state interpretation of what free cash is?
I'm not sure what the question is. You want the definition of free cash? Is that what you're looking for?
I know the answer, but these people should know. Nothing is free.
Now, are you looking for the definition of free cash? I just want to make sure, I know the question is.
Yes.
So, free cash is basically funds left over or an accumulation of funds of prior years left in the fund. It's remaining fund balance adjusted for certain items that the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, reviews and certifies. So basically, it is previously taxed money or other receipts that is available for such purposes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on Article 4. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we will now post the results. 156, yes. Fourteen, no. The motion passes. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator? Excuse me. My name is Carolyn Duffy, 33 First Street. I pressed the... My button, and nothing happened.
In other words, here is no red, yellow, green light that lights up?
No light, no little... 1A or 2B in the article.
The town clerk will assist you with that. Thank you. We will move on to Article 5. To see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer the balance of $557,163.28 in the Park Ave Construction Fund to the Bartlett High School Renovation Fund or take any other action thereof. Article 5 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $557,163.28 from the Park Ave Construction Fund to Bartlett High School Renovation Fund.
We have a motion and a second discussion, Mr. Town Administrator.
Yeah, this article transfers the balance of the Youngstown Funds from the Park Ave Construction Project, which came in under budget. The funds have been borrowed, have been borrowed in total. So, nice job on that building committee. These funds have already been raised. They must be extended for a like purpose, which means only projects that are eligible to be bonded in the same manner and for the same period of time has to be used in that type of project. So the goal is to use this to supplement the high school project. And again, keep in mind, these funds have already been raised. These in no way affect the current estimate of the debt exclusion for the new project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article 5 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Okay, we have a little technical issue that we just solved. We'll have to ask for a revote. So voting is now open on Article five, once again. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One forty-eight, yes. Twenty, no. The motion to pass Article five passes. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn our special meeting, as it's time to open the annual, and to resume the special meeting immediately following the annual meeting. We have a motion, we have a second. We'll do a voice vote on this vote. All those in favor say aye. Those no, the ayes have it, and we will postpone to the next meeting. We have seven people standing, we can go to a standing vote, at which point we'll need to count them all. We don't have the ability to do the electronic voting for this, please. Seven people not standing, the motion passes, we'll move on.
No one need to stand.
I asked seven people to stand, no one stood. Well, let's all pay attention, ladies and gentlemen, okay? We're in a procedural atmosphere. All right? And that'll be enough, Mr. Barrisic. It's already testing my patience. In order to go to a standing vote, to adjourn the special meeting, and move on to the annual, seven people need to stand to request that. You may do so now. Sufficiency standing, we'll now do a standing vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator?
If we don't start the annual town meeting at seven P.M., is there any effect?
The next, we'll take the next step with that, Mr. Moderator. The step would be then to open the annual, the annual meeting, and adjourn the annual meeting, and resume the special. So right now, I'll do a voice vote, once again, to move this along. All those in favor of postponing, of adjourned the special meeting, so that we can start the annual meeting, at which point the special would resume immediately following the annual meeting. Say aye. All those opposed, say no. But noes have it. We will now entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting, to open the annual meeting, with a plan to then motion to adjourn the annual to resume, following the resumption of the special meeting. Understood? Easy to do?
Yes.
Move in a second. All those in favor of adjourned the special meeting, opening the annual meeting, then adjourned the annual, and immediately resumed the special. Say aye. Both say no. Thank you, the ayes have it. Thank you for allowing us to follow the procedure, I appreciate it. We'll now open the annual town meeting. First, I want to start with the moderators' motions. That we move, by unanimous consent, to dispense with the reading of the annual warrant, and that the moderator moves that the moderator may extend the floor to town management and staff and other non-voters, provided that they must be recognized by the moderator. This will be by unanimous consent. Hearing no objections, the motion's passed. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting, to be resumed immediately following the completion of the special town meeting. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those no, the ayes have it. We are back to the special, Article six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash, a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding capital purchases and projects, as listed in the table on your sheet, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon. We have fourteen projects listed in your package, for a total of one million, seventy thousand, three hundred dollars. The motion is, the article is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board and the FinCom have recommended favorable action on this article. No, because the vote was to resume the special meeting immediately following the adjournment of the annual. The total amount, I'm sorry, one million, seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, one million, seventy thousand, three hundred dollars for the purposes of this article.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator, this, this menu is part of the town's capital plan, but it was, I'm sorry? Talking to me?
Just speak a little louder, that's all, Mr. Town Administrator. People in the back are having a hard time.
Okay. This menu is putting together a very long, exhaustive process, led by our Assistant Town Administrator and our Finance Director, that went on for several months. This venue is quite extensive, the explanations are in the booklet. I don't want to, I'm not going to read all these. If anybody has a specific question, the department head will be prepared to answer. I don't want to presume questions out.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Please state your name and why is it?
Mike Dawson, I think you might add.
Thank you.
Um, question for you, Mr. Administrator. You figure out a budget each and every year. Do we have a key to the budget? I mean, would these incorporate with it, your budget from last year? No, this is part of the capital plan, this is not part of our operating budget. But yes, we do maintain our operating budget on target every year. This is part of the capital plan, and we use free cash to spend this money on one-time funds, funds available for one-time projects, or whatever. Is this coming from free cash? It is, yes.
Any other discussion?
Sarah Sansom, Eleventh Earnest Street. I'm also on the Finance Committee. I would like to direct you to the Finance Committee report that was available as you came in. If you could look to page six, it would give you a rundown of all the proposed withdrawals from the free cash.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article six to a vote? Yes.
Um, I'm recording, I'm going to go six separately. Um, I know you mentioned before, but I couldn't remember. What is our total of free cash, and then how much is this?
Uh, three point six million is our free cash available for this this year.
Okay, and then this is one million?
Correct.
So it would be those about?
Well, we do expect to put one million, later on you'll see in the warrant, we're proposing to put one million there on stabilization fund. That would be the remainder of the free cash available.
Okay, so it kind of replaces it back in, to the, not free cash, but putting it back in.
Correct. Well, the free cash will ultimately go to our stabilization fund, which is our savings account.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Town Administrator?
So, as stated, we have about three point six million in free cash. As requested through town, the special town meeting is about two point four, two point five million. After, if all requests are approved, we will still have nearly one point two million dollars of free cash remaining, which does meet or fall within the goals set by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. We're now ready to put Article six to a vote. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, press two B. Time for voting is now open. One forty-three, and a yes, I missed the no, but the thirty-three, no. The motion to pass Article six passes. Article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from sewer retained earnings, a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding capital purchases and projects, as listed in the table in your handout, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon. The table lists fourteen projects with their amounts, for a total of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and the Board of Selectmen, the Board and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, the vote, I'm sorry, I move the town vote to transfer seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings for the purposes of this article.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Once again, Mr. Moderator, the explanation for each of these items is listed in the booklet. This has been online for approximately a week now. The warrant was online for a couple of weeks, so, again, if there's questions, have the appropriate department head answer them?
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to put Article seven to a vote. All those in favor, one A. Opposed, two B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One forty-nine, yes. Twenty-eight, no. The motion to approve Article seven passes. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from water retained earnings, a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding capital purchases and projects, as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon. In your handout, you'll see a table that lists nine projects and their amounts, for a total of five hundred thousand dollars. Article eight is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and Board of Selectmen, and the Board and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from water retained earnings for the purposes of this article.
Motion and a second, open up for discussion, Mr. Town Administrator.
I would prefer back to the prior conversation about the sewer, sewer, um, projects.
Any discussion on Article eight? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. Voting is now open. Time for voting has expired, we'll now post the results. One fifty-six, yes. Twenty-six, no. The motion to approve Article eight passes. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new rescue truck, including associated equipment and all related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow said sum, under MGL Chapter forty-four, Section seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, or to take any action thereon. Article nine is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board and the FinCom Committee have recommended favorable action on this article, and as a borrowing article, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I motion, I'm sorry, I move that the town vote to appropriate one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new rescue truck, including associated equipment and all related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen... the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion, Mr. Tomica.
Yes, I refer to the information in your town meeting guide. Replacing this truck will give the town an on-the-frontline rescue pumper that can be used for most emergency calls. This rescue pumper will replace two trucks. Rescue one is a nineteen ninety-five heavy rescue truck that is now twenty-seven years old and has been rotting out for some time now. This truck carries specialized rescue equipment and will last the town at least twenty years. And I would add that this borrowing will be within the levy limit. This is not something that would impact your taxes as an exclusion, capital exclusion, or in any way, any type of an override.
Just to follow up, so everybody's aware, uh, over the next couple of fiscal years, we actually have some non-excluded debt service falling off. We have about ninety-four thousand falling off for fiscal twenty twenty-five, eighteen thousand for fiscal twenty twenty-six, and about two hundred and seven thousand for twenty twenty-seven. So, the timing of this article fits well with debt service coming off. We will replace it with the debt service that would come on. Uh, so this is actually a good time, especially when you factor in that the lead time for such a vehicle is, I believe, like eighteen months to two years. Uh, so this actually is a really good time, uh, to kind of work this into the budget.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Thanks, Mr. Bell, very helpful.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
According to Article Six differently, could you perhaps explain a little bit more in depth what this rescue truck is versus, say, just a fire truck?
Fire Chief Brian Hickey?
Oh, it's a rescue pumper. It does both rescue, it'll carry both rescue and pump, and it'd be using the frontline pumping truck for the, uh, what?
So the pumping would be, say, from a pond to pump water?
Yeah, it will, it will carry water. Uh, you've got the pump, if you know anybody who can pump water, so that would be able to be involved.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening. Mike Pinto with a quick question. Uh, Chief, I have a quick question on the truck. As you know, I was a firefighter for a convoy truck until just last year, served almost fourteen years. I also sell fire trucks for a living for E1 Fire Apparates and the Eden Get. A rescue pumper, I'm assuming, is similar to Engine Four, is that be correct?
It will be very similar to Engine Four, yes.
So I'm just trying to understand, so large my money, I mean, cost has gone up, but I recently spec the truck really identical to before, the cost about, you know, fifty thousand, so can you tell us how you came to the cost of one point two million?
We get pricing from different vendors in the area.
Which ones? I have curiosity. I know we might include that, so I'm just trying to understand which vendor, because we can get in small, that's a huge price tag for any pumper, rescue pumper.
I guess what you're looking at is the, uh, the vendors that are in the, in the area, the Shears, Suckin', uh, vendors like that, very small amount of vendors that actually build and sell fire trucks. So we're anticipating the growth and the cost of going up on the truck. So if you were to come here and actually ask that type of question, nobody would give me a written quote because you don't have actual spec on truck there.
Well, I mean, so we provide quotes to the town all the time. We've got quotes for Engine Four, the tower we purchased before, uh, all the quotes and pricing pieces that we had as well, that happened beginning of the year. So, I mean, we provide just a quote that's not important today. So that's a huge price tag. I just wanted to know if we included that truck, it makes it so much different than Engine Four.
I would just want to point out real quick, the amount, uh, that you cited, the under a thousand and change, I don't build fire trucks, but you're talking about paying for this two and a half, maybe three years out.
No, sir, that's...
I'm sorry, yes, sir. And the other thing, I, no, that is how it works. That's what happens when you bond. See, what happens is you actually probably short-term bond, and then at some point, uh, when the vehicle is received, then you would bond the truck for how many years?
The cost of buying it, the cost of buying it, the new contract, which could be tomorrow or a month, but that's not accurate.
Yeah, but somebody's going to have to guarantee that. And by the way, for everybody here, there actually is a procurement process, so I'm not sure if your company would be involved in that, but you have every opportunity to do that, and so appreciate you advertising that tonight.
I'm not advocating anything. I still have to say, as I said, I used to have a fire for much of the last year. I know for a fact, like, a fire truck, similar to Engine Four, that's a lot of pressure, so I'm trying to help everybody that's going to include myself, who doesn't know how you got the number, what was included in that truck to get the price tag of one point two million?
Well, for the town, getting members that are here tonight, uh, we wanted to make sure we had all the bases covered. We're planning on doing the project under that budget, hopefully, uh, but the way the prices have been decreasing over the last couple of years is just astronomical in my mind. Just a few years ago, we paid six hundred thousand for a truck. So the prices just keep going up, and yesterday, I got around between nine hundred and a million dollars.
Okay, sir, I'd like to move on. We have others, people asking questions.
I have a question to answer, yeah, so we're not being...
I would like to move on, sir. Okay? We have other people that would like to ask. If you'd like to wait your turn, I will entertain you. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Ken Man Deal, seven seven ninety School Street. Uh, uh, this is for the town administrator. I'm looking at the, uh, your capital plan, capital improvements program, and I can see that almost every department projects out into the future, but the police and fire, we only see this year, and I'm wondering, are we looking at any other million dollar fire trucks in the next five years?
The answer's no. We're not anticipating, uh, purchasing a fire truck for at least five years. Now, again, keeping in mind that this is going to take about two years, I've heard even up to two and a half years, to actually take possession of a vehicle, even if it was appropriated this evening. Now, again, keep in mind, the town meeting has to be closed, it has to be, um, again, has to be perfectly adjourned as well. We're talking about July one, when these funds wouldn't even be available, uh, the vehicle would have to be built, these are all custom-built vehicles. Uh, I know that the fire chief would plan, which is really typical, to have members of his department design this, uh, for, for approval, but then you have to go through a procurement process, so it takes a long time even to get to the point where you've even ordered a vehicle.
Any other discussion?
Yes. So I can just tell, uh, many times unbilled are food group right now, so I have two and a half, three years on average, so that information is accurate. However, Chief mentioned the price increase is going up extra, extra on, uh, year over year, it's, uh, exceptional amount compared to years past, that's also true. Um, however, as I stated before, being in this industry, a, a engine, rescue pumper, similar to Engine Four, um, has an increase to two and twenty thousand dollars, we put around eight hundred eighty K. So Chief, could you please explain to us what's different about the new truck compared to that truck, that inflate the cost of one point two million even more?
Well, Mike, as, as you know, you're in the business. There, there are a lot of different factors that can...
But I, I mean, I would refuse that, so that's why I don't, I don't need to understand.
So, to help you understand, you know, we're clicking it, just trying to cover our basis so we don't come up short. The truck may come in way under what we're asking for. If it does, it will be fantastic, those same town people, a lot of money.
We, we don't have a quote in hand, but we're asking for one point two million dollars. It seems a little pretty conservative, if that's the case, sir.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. Um, so actually, it's not. Uh, this is actually the way most vendors are reluctant to, uh, make a quote or proposal.
Please let him answer the question.
When there's no authorization, it's very difficult to get vendors, you know, like you said, Chief Hickey's having a difficult time getting vendors to put numbers on paper just to come up with an estimate for town meeting. So, what I would say is, the normal process is, the funds are appropriated, and then you go through the procurement process. Now, if, as you say, the funds, if the final cost of a truck is eight hundred and eighty thousand, as opposed to one point two million, then, when the truck is completed and paid for, the excess funds will be returned to the general fund and then become part of the free cash calculation at that point in time. So, if we're a little conservative or being with a high estimate, there's really not much downside, because as we say, if you go through the procurement process and you get the best price for the vehicle and it comes way under, the town doesn't lose any money. It's still sitting in the town coffers, it's still earning interest to the general fund, it's just now we can actually go out through the process to procure a vehicle.
So I'm sure you're aware of the, the procurement process, uh, process entailed, so it's a state, every year, all the vendors submit their best, look forward and determine pricing. It's a state that preemptively prior to purchasing the truck. You can go off the NAPDC, which we've utilized in the past, purchase a vehicle and see the cost of the truck, from there you can add upon that truck and get a general feel and idea of how much money you need. Uh, Chief Hickey is well aware of this, because we've already utilized this process before, so, and also should they're aware of that, you can find it, so whether or not a vendor, which is just not the case, is reluctant to do this, we already know what the truck and cost by going on the NAPDC, so we take the time to do that and see how we can, such a large size, produce a truck.
Okay, thank you. Please stay, sir. I'd like to move on, Mr. Town Administrator. We have a couple of more speakers, and then we'll move on.
Mr. Moderator, Matt Pitt, forty-two Nelson Street. Question for Chief Hickey. Have you specked out this, this truck yet? Or do you just have an idea?
No, we have an idea, we're looking for, we haven't actually had, put, penned a paper for a specification on the truck yet.
Okay. And the other thing, I, I know that you're replacing a twenty-year-old rescue truck. How much of that equipment's going to have, be replaced as well?
On the rescue truck, we're actually pretty fortunate, we have some fairly new, uh, extracation equipment under transport from that truck to the new truck. A lot of the other stuff is pretty old, so probably there's some of that's...
Okay, and that's all part of the price, correct?
That'd be correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Pitt, this twenty-second time. Chief, um, you're required to follow, um, the Massachusetts bid law in order to, you have to put bids back together, then you have to take this truck out to bid, and then you don't have to water it presumably for a little bit of...
Correct. Well, you can do it that way, you can do what they call state bid list, or you can, whether it's vendors who sign up for a state bid list, you can go to that vendor and get a contract with them, they give you the proper certification, and they give you the best price of the truck, so you can do it either way, I guess.
Either way, it's subject to a competitive process, which ensures the publicists that that's price for the, for the truck.
That's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Moderator, respectfully, I'm not sure what the gentleman's point is. If he thinks the article is requesting too much money, which I certainly disagree with, because I think what the chief's indicating, he's trying to be prudent and make sure he's got enough of an appropriation, so that when he puts the bid out or buys off the state bid list, he doesn't have to come back here for thirty-three thousand dollars if he's wrong. He's trying to get, in further, Finance Director has assured us that if the truck comes in less than one point two, whatever lower price it comes in, the money returns to the Treasury, we just don't issue the bond for any more than the truck price is. So if the gentleman believes that it's too much money, rather than continue to debate all this, why does he not just offer a motion for the meeting's consideration to reduce the prices, that's what he thinks is right? So we can move on, Mr. Moderator, instead of endlessly having a technical discussion, which everybody else in the room doesn't understand.
I'm, I'm going to roll out one more statement, sir, and then that's it.
I was just trying to get to the actual factuality of everything. So if we're pushing off the state bid list, which we've done, passed through apparatus, you can see the price of truck now to, I'd say, where the ten percent of the final cost of our truck is going to be. So if actually, that's the time, we probably would argue that number now, and not have to overshoot.
Thank you. Any other discussion, sir?
Mr. Moderator, I appreciate Chief Matt for our bits in that street. So my question, Chief, just trying to get clear, uh, clarification, are we getting rid of our heavy rescue for another Engine Four, which is a rescue pumper? That's our, that's our...
Yes, that's the plan. We're getting rid of Rescue One A to do three, uh, one rescue pumper.
So, uh, fully fledged, your staff is, Rescue One, uh, well equipped, everybody in here that doesn't know, uh, we're very blessed to have that, and this town is very successful down there. To get rid of that for another Engine Four, I don't advise itself, that's a good idea. Uh, Engine Four, excuse me, Engine Four has one and a half compartments of space on that truck. Where one, one says E tools, the other half compartments are trucks. I would think it's a very bright idea, in my opinion, to get rid of our heavy rescue for our other Engine Four.
Moderator?
Yes.
Librissick, seven seven six School Street. Want to add a matter or point of interest? Do the moderator?
Yes.
On the debt service, we previously admitted from the speaker that some of our debt has expired this fiscal year. If you go to the annual budget under, under the debt service, you will see, after the fifth of this, next fiscal year, the debt service increased, does it, a somewhat increased by over two hundred thousand dollars, not decreased. It's incorrect. I'm not disputing, this is not a dispute. But what I'm saying here, what the increase is, is the pre-renovation bonding that we're building for Violet High School. The first principle is our fiscal twenty-four. The interest is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And secondly, you might hear, you might hear about interest on the other side, because we're going to pay interest when we pull on the borrow. On the interest side of it, if we want, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, yes, the interest side of it, it's going up over... Two million dollars, interest. Say, how can that be? Well, I was explained by a financial town official, that we went off borrowing to redo, to do the school that we approved on an override. That the one point four million dollars of interest this year is for the bonding, or maybe the town can explain it further or best, if it's, if it's appropriate, Mr. Moderator. But the debt service is not going down by the figures that are presented here.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Bell differentiated between exempt and non-exempt debt, and I think that's being confused, yeah.
Yes, that is correct. Um, so you have exempt or excluded debt, which is voted by the town to exclude from Proposition two and a half, and then you have debt that falls within the Proposition two and a half law. And so what I referred to earlier about reduction in debt was the non-exempt or non-excluded debt service will be going down beginning in twenty twenty-five. And, but overall, yes, our debt service is going up, but like I said, that is the excluded debt service for the high school that Mr. Berizik was just referencing.
Thank you. Time for discussion has expired. We'll now put question nine, Article Nine, to a vote. All those in favor of approving Article Nine, press one A. All those opposed, two B. Time for voting is now open. And it is a two-thirds vote to pass as a borrowing article. Hi, can you reset that? Yeah. I only asked to reset it because I did not close the vote, so I apologize. Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I understand. No offense. I will remember that. I would like to review it, yeah. I didn't announce that it closed, not realizing that our little machine here is on a timer. So I will be a little quicker with my request to close the vote. Are we ready? Okay, I'm sorry. So if we could re-vote again, please, on Article Nine. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One oh nine, yes, eighty-eight, no. The motion does not pass.
Moderator?
Yes. What would be the purpose of reconsideration, sir? Unless you have new information that we did not hear the first time.
Just a question respectfully.
Sure, yeah.
I think I heard the fine, the town administrator and the finance director indicate that at the expiration of all actions to be considered tonight, that we would still have a sum in free cash in excess of a million dollars. I wonder, because this requires a two-thirds vote, because it's a bond, as town council has indicated, I wonder frankly if you would accept the motion to make this appropriation from free cash, which it sounds like we have sufficient revenue, and therefore, uh, it requires a simple majority.
I'm sorry, sir, the motion to reconsider will not go through. Um, what you're trying to do is change the method of payment for the article, but it doesn't, it doesn't specifically alter the initial vote, which was the no vote. Thank you. You're welcome. Moving on to Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a generator for the Gladys E. Kelly Library, including associated equipment and all related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, be authorized to borrow said sum under M G L, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore. Article Ten is sponsored by the Board of Selectment. The Board of Selectment and FinCom recommend favorable action on this article. And as it is a borrowing article, it requires a two-thirds vote for passage.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a generator for the Gladys E. Kelly Library, including associated equipment and all related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, be authorized to borrow said sum under M G L, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the standby generator was, uh, part of the original design of the, the library, uh, spec, but it was, uh, I'm sorry, eliminated because of funding purposes. The library, obviously, is one of our major town buildings. There have actually been people stuck on the elevator due to power outages. And it is also used as a daytime shelter, uh, during inclement weather and other necessary, um, activities. Further explanation, I would ask that, uh, yes, I watched a superintendent who was nice enough to offer his expertise to the library when they were considering how to approach it. So I'll ask Tom if he could say a couple more words.
Good evening. Just as Rick had mentioned, uh, there is no standby hall at the generator.
Just a little louder, please.
Sure thing, thank you. Uh, as you'll see, the generator is awful expensive, this project, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a very large, uh, electrical service coming into the library, six hundred amps. Uh, we're looking at a four hundred K W generator. Uh, Rick had mentioned the water is sort of a problem. There's a system, uh, with specifications, and we'll also be assisting with the installation to keep the cost, uh, down as much as we can. Questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
According to both six agreeing, um, I believe it may have been, um, quickly crossed over, but is it my understanding that it will be used if we had, say, that ice storm, you know, ten years ago? We had nothing in town to support us. We ended up having to go to Dudley Middle School to be warm. So would that be used in that kind of incident?
The answer is yes. However, our shelter that's red cross certified is actually a senior center, uh, which is, as you probably know, attached to the town hall. So I think that point in time was different from this point in time. I think the town is better prepared now, uh, because of its facility upgrades since then. But to your point, the answer is, if necessary, it would be available.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? We're now ready to move on Article Ten. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, two B. Again, Article Ten requires two-thirds vote for passage. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, one thirteen, no eighty-one. The motion does not pass. Article eleven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the town's free cash a sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or any other sum for the asbestos abatement and removal of an unsafe structure known as one twenty-four R High Street, or take any action thereon. Article eleven is sponsored by the Building Department. The Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from the town's free cash a sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or any other sum for the asbestos abatement and removal of an unsafe structure known as one twenty-four R High Street.
Motion and a second discussion.
And I would suggest in my comment of any other sum. There's an error in my motion. So can I restate that?
Sure, why don't you?
I move that the town appropriate and transfer from the town's free cash a sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the asbestos abatement and removal of an unsafe structure known as one twenty-four R High Street.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the town is seeking the funds to pay for the removal of a dilapidated structure located on one twenty-four High Street, which is currently in various stages of failure. The roof has collapsed in various areas. The windows and doors have been smashed and removed. And the structure has tested positive for asbestos, causing a major safety concern for the local area and the town of Webster. The town has repeatedly had the structure boarded up for securing purposes, but it continues to be to attract vandalism, excessive loitering within the structure and area. And basically, it's a public safety problem on multiple levels. The property is assessed at fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, obviously, if we're gonna lean the property, that's not gonna be enough to cover the cost, but we will be pursuing whatever legal options that we can to recoup the full cost of this from the, from the property.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, it's all busy. Maybe I'll change my address and sell this exclusively. This is a single, one-car garage. I'm gonna try. Can I move this thing down to the lightest of areas? Moderator? Can I move this down a little? Am I good?
I'm sorry?
Can I move this down a little so I can have a look?
Yeah, just, just be careful when you pull it down. I don't know how long that wire is. Hey, though.
We don't like it.
Oh, okay, great. We're right ahead.
This piece of property goes back a long way. That goes down back in nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen fifty-eight. I was a student at Saint Anthony's Baroque Your School. It's right across the street from this unit. It was a car repaired garage, but we heard clang, clang, bang, bang almost every day. Right now, three six hundred square foot of the building. Almost, almost six thousand square feet of land. So it's going on half, or half of what the land is. It's owned, on public record, it's owned by a family, family trust out of Milburn, as is one twenty-four High Street, this is the house with the front. My question is, why are we having to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for somebody's little small garage that appears in years, must have been whatever? But now, we're gonna spend that kind of money to approve nothing?
Um, Mr. Moderator, tax or bill measure? Uh, unfortunately, as a whole, as a group, the town has eliminated so far ninety-one hazardous structures, of which a lot of them we've paid for, but got the money back through liens and processes, which is exactly what we plan on doing with this. The original call for the demolition of the structure was initially like sixty thousand dollars. After we had it tested for asbestos, that's when it jumped. Because it turned out that the roof had collapsed, the roof was hot, which now made everything in the building hot. The building is full of debris. It's wide open, we have people in and out of there constantly. We're wasting a lot of tax dollars just on babysitting this property because between fire, myself, police, we're constantly down there trying to get this thing sealed up, stop people from entering, stop people from getting, and if something gets wrecked down there, we know about it. We know this issue's there, so we're gonna be liable when the end.
No, it's privately owned, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
It's privately owned property, it is not town property.
We have been made aware of the issue. We have been made aware of the situation, so we are responsible.
No, we're not, sir. I suggest we, we keep the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and let the property owner, the family trust, take care of that three-six hundred square foot building.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I would just point out, the problem is that they're not gonna do it, or they would have already done it. So when a municipality is informed of a major, uh, safety issue, we have an obligation to take care of it. It's as simple as a pothole. If we're informed of an issue with a pothole on a road, if we're aware of it and we don't fix it, um, we're liable for it. And that's just an example of what we're talking about. We are aware of the safety problem. The, uh, the owner is not gonna fix it without further legal action. It has a, that would be the intent, but that doesn't mitigate the safety problem, the involvement of all our public safety, uh, officials to try and get this to be a safe location. The goal is to lean the property and then pursue whatever legal action we need to do to try to recoup those funds. If we decided to go out and go to legally right now, um, it would probably take you probably four or five years to get some action. It would probably be a situation where we probably have to give notice three or four or five times. Eventually, maybe get, you know, somebody into court. Um, that's gonna take god knows how many months, maybe a year. And what would probably happen is eventually is the court would appoint a receiver. Um, that person would then go through a lengthy process of trying to mediate. Um, and ultimately, somebody's gonna fix it. This is probably gonna take five years. And so we have a safety issue that we know about, and it's gonna continue to stay here, continue to cause, uh, public safety issues and concerns for all that time, and it's only gonna get worse as it remains open. So, you know, you can vote for it or not, but the issue is the problem's not gonna go away. The goal for the town, for us, is to fix the property and pursue the, uh, pursue the owner legally.
Any other discussion? Here we now, we're ready to put Article Eleven to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eleven, press one A. All those opposed, press two B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the result. Yes, one twenty-four, no seventy-one. The motion to approve passes. No, there was not a two-thirds vote coming from free cash. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash one million dollars or any other sum to the stabilization fund, or take any other action thereon. Article twelve is sponsored by the Board of Selectment, and the Board and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
I move that the town appropriate, I'm sorry, transfer from free cash one million dollars to the stabilization fund.
There's a motion and a second, and I will just explain that this only requires a majority vote to pass. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, this, uh, by transferring not one million dollars to the stabilization fund, the town will continue to meet its policy, fiscal policy of maintaining a minimum stabilization fund balance of five percent of the annual budget.
Any other discussion? Here we now, we're ready to put Article Thirteen to a vote. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, I'm sorry, Article Twelve. Ready to put Article Twelve to a vote. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, two B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One thirty-nine, yes, forty-eight, no. The motion to approve passes. Article Thirteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of the wastewater treatment plant aeration system phase one rehabilitation project, and all other related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, be authorized to borrow said sum under M G L, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, and/or take any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, or to take any action thereon. Article Thirteen is sponsored by the Webster's Water Sewer Commission. The Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of wastewater treatment plant aeration system phase one rehabilitation project, and all related incidental costs, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, be authorized to borrow said sum under M G L, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, and eight, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the three aeration tanks that remain offline since twenty sixteen, leave the facility with no redundancy and do not allow staff to remove the three active tanks for much-needed regular routine maintenance. The facility has recently undergone discharge permit changes, which require the use of all six aeration basins operating efficiently to ensure that we can, that we remain in compliance with federal and state regulations. The most recent cost estimates provided by our engineer, by our engineer indicate we need an additional nine hundred thousand dollars to complete mechanical repairs on the basin. It is anticipated that future debt service will be funded from future sewer fund receipts.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Diane Mandiel, seven-seven.
Diane Mandiel, 779 School Street. It's evident that the town meeting has not had much appetite for borrowing articles tonight. I highly encourage us to pass this article. We have a very active professional water sewer commission who has been working diligently with our water and sewer superintendent to improve the water conditions in the town of Webster. And they, they need this money to continue to improve those conditions. It would be really sad to, to go back when we have made so much progress already in the water and sewer.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Can retain earnings be used for this? I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Can we, can water retained earnings be used for this? Partially, yes.
Yes, you asked that question.
How much?
$500,000 for debt services and $400,000 for a reappropriation from a previous project. And in last year fiscal '22, we appropriated $1 million, but our recent estimates show that we need 1.9 million, so we're short.
We can't take $1 million, should we take earnings?
We don't want to use all of our retained earnings and have nothing left that we'd like to maintain.
What is the covering amount of retained earnings in water?
If we tend correctly, if I'm wrong here, it was, last time we looked at 2.4 million?
Moderator?
We'll let the town council give an accurate answer.
So currently, sewer retained earnings is certified at $2,86,662. Uh, currently, we have approximately a total of $1,013,000 of articles. If all those were approved, there would be about $1,073,000 of sewer retained earnings remaining. Um, I would ask through the moderator to town council that earlier you would not allow reconsideration on a motion of a borrowing article from free cash. Uh, I believe that this would be a similar circumstance, so I just posed that question to town council and moderator.
Well, at this time, the motion is still pending. So if you wanted to amend the motion to fund the request, you could do so. However, you know, the previous article, that was already voted on, and, and.
Okay, Ben, I know we're talking about Article 12. We have another article coming up with the same situation. I can't address that right now, if I have to stand up, I will. We are going to have here, we're gonna hear, request $33 million for two water treatment plants. Through the moderator, how old is a covering water treatment plant at Memorial Beach?
I believe we're talking about a different plant, are we not?
Talking about the age of Memorial Beach?
No, we're talking about a separate.
Age of the aeration plant, water treatment system that we built at Second Island.
That's, that's, it's a water system, we're talking about the sewer system.
Right, I'm seeing, okay, I understand that. And I apologize for mixing apples and oranges. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We're now ready to move on Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, if I understand what town council said, if we don't want to run the risk of not having this project pass by a two-thirds borrowing vote, or would prefer to have it be simply a simple majority vote, because this is a critical project, obviously, that you will allow amendment to the motion now to take it out of sewer retained earnings, rather than risk having a borrowing article defeated. Because if it's defeated, then you're not gonna allow us to reconsider it, so. We've got a little bit of a chicken and an egg problem here. I think that's what the gentleman asked earlier, and I'm asking the same question because you wouldn't accept my motion before, after the vote was taken, I still don't understand that part of it, but you're ruling, you're ruling. But I don't want it to happen again.
Okay, I understand, just give me a quick minute. You are free to make an amendment, sir, if you wish to.
In that case, Mr. Moderator, I would move to amend the motion so that it would read as follows. I move that the town appropriate $500,000 by transfer from sewer retained earnings for the purpose of the wastewater treatment plant aeration system Phase 1 rehabilitation project and all related incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, delete from, so that it ends with, in all related incidental costs, period. Because all the rest of the language would be unnecessary.
So we will amend the motion as you request to delete borrowing and take it out of sewer retained earnings. Yes, we do, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what we're voting.
Can I just say one thing?
That's an amendment to the motion. We need a second if we're gonna discuss this. We have a motion and a second. Now we'll open it up, a discussion. This is on the amendment, to amend it, that's all.
I just wanna add, if we were to use up our retained earnings, we have future work. This is, this is Phase 1, as you can see in the guide. We have a Phase 2 coming in the near future to enhance the treatment process of those aeration bases. So to use up all of our retained earnings, it couldn't be a problem for us for the next phase.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Or you go six hundred line. If you have retained earnings as of now, the July 1 gargantuan increase on water and sewer, why wouldn't we have more retained earnings for all of these projects? What's the increase for them?
We're looking at 10% increase this year at the sewer department. Our operating expenses have also increased, electricity, chemicals, fuel, same things we hope space at your home. We're seeing wastewater, and so our operating expenses have definitely jumped.
Okay, so the increase that we got for sewer that's coming up isn't going to give you any retained earnings at all?
We attempt to put back what we can pay to maintain certain balance. We never want to be without retained earnings because it's awful expensive to manage and operate on the water and sewer systems. If I have any cash available, it would be a problem.
I just wanna make sure that I understand the increase, you know, what we have now, if this amendment goes through, what would it take from retained earnings? And that the increase that's coming up wouldn't give more retained earnings? Like it might replace some of it, I guess is what I'm asking.
Right, if we were to use all the retained earnings, then we might have to next year adjust our rates to offset what we use now, so. We could counter it up. And we did do a very enhanced and detailed rate study recently, which is posted online. It's a five-year plan, there's a lot of detail there.
Okay, so if we change this to borrowing the retention, retained, next year we could see another increase versus this being a project that we borrowed?
That's very likely, and I'll probably have to go back to the drawing board and do our rate study again, which I just finished. Like I said, it's a five-year plan, so change, completely change that final process.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Mandiel, 779 School Street. Was the amendment to take the money from free cash or from retained earnings?
Retained earnings.
Okay. Um, I support the original motion, I'd speak against it, the amendment. There's no reason to believe that it will pass at this point. And, I brought the voices up. I think that we should go with the original proposal. The, no, I know what my question was, this is actually more a town council question about the validity of the amendment. The warrant doesn't give, doesn't offer the opportunity to take the money from other sources, which is commonly seen where you, the warrant article is written in a way that you can take your money from anywhere. This only says it can be borrowed. It's not saying that we can take it from elsewhere. I don't know if that makes any sense.
In response to the question through you, Mr. Moderator, the warrant article itself says take any other action, or words to that effect. Uh, that gives notice to members of the town that there will be action taken under this article, and it may not necessarily be exactly as printed in the warrant. It could be an amendment within the scope, and in my opinion, this amendment is, would be and is within the scope of the original order.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I just wanna make it clear. I'm in favor of saying this article passed. I'm concerned about a town meeting getting involved in a particular subject matter like this, trying to second-guess the professional engineer that we report on the Water Sewer Commission, which is composed of citizens of the community, and their recommendation. The intent of my motion is to ensure that this will pass. Now, if what I'm hearing is that the folks who get paid to do this every day are convinced that the bonding article will pass, then I will be happy to withdraw my motion. But if, I just don't want to play with fire here, after watching this meeting for a couple of hours now, and risk losing this project because two-thirds, two-thirds fail. So I'm happy to withdraw motion if you want.
Well, it'll be up to town meeting right now to vote yes or no on amendment. If the amendment does not pass, then we will go back to the original motion to borrow.
I do have a right, Mr. Moderator, to withdraw my motion, do I not?
Yes, sir.
So, so please, sir, could I refer my questions to the water sewer engineer? And town administrator, and finance director, or it's like anybody else who'd like to tell me what they'd like to do? Because I, I don't want to fork their will, but I don't wanna see a very important project get lost in the process, as the lady said a few months ago to the mic earlier.
We'd be fine with you withdrawing your motion.
I'm sorry?
We'd be fine with withdrawing your motion.
So, Mr. Moderator, I would withdraw my motion, my amendment.
I do wanna follow up, it seems like from the few people that spoke, you do understand that half of the treatment plant is out of service, and the other half that is in operation needs maintenance. This could potentially be a regulatory issue in the near future, so this is a very important project.
The amendment has been asked to be withdrawn, I'll need a second. So move. The amendment is now withdrawn. We're back to the original motion to borrow for the approval of Article 13. Any more discussion?
Row 22, Spring Street, Webster. I'm also a member of the Water Sewer Commission, which has worked diligently through the water and sewer crises that we've had. This is the sewer department. The sewer department, there's three, there's six bays that treat all the sewerage. Three work at one time, and the other three are in reserve. Ideally, you're supposed to switch three and three to keep things flowing without problems. As happened so many times, the three that were offline started to deteriorate, and they weren't functioning. So we've resolved, we relied solely on the three that we're using now. Well, you can't do that forever. Uh, we all know what happens when you don't maintain things. We've heard that as selectmen, that residents want us to maintain the systems and buildings and everything that we have. This motion is trying to do that so that we can fix the three that are inoperable, and allow us to transfer to that. And then they mentioned Phase 2, which would be to fix the three that have been online very long. I hope that clears it up, I didn't wanna take a lot of time, but, thank you.
Moderator, just a point of clarification. This is an enterprise account, right?
That's correct.
As is, as is water. So this is not going on a tax rate, it's gonna go on a water bill.
Correct.
This past year, I just got my water bill today, coincidentally, but anyway. This Water Sewer Commission has increased our water rates by 10%? 15%?
15 for water, 10 for sewer.
And 10 for sewer. And that, this is gonna affect that even more next year because of borrowing, but just wanna make a clarification, these people understand. At a point of order, this town meeting is for discussion, does not have a time limit. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Every number, ready to vote on Article 13. Again, the vote is for $500,000 and to borrow. Therefore, it's a two-thirds vote to approve. All those in favor, press 1A. Opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Voting has now expired, we'll post the results. 164, yes, 28, no. The motion to approve passes. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer $400,000 in the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Fund to the Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration System Phase 1 Fund, number to be determined, or take any action thereon. Article 14 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $400,000 from the SCADA Fund to the Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration System Phase 1 Fund.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I would refer to the in-depth explanation in the book. Town meeting guide, and ask any questions can be directed to our water sewer superintendent.
Any other discussion? Every number, ready to move on Article 14, all those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. This is a majority vote. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, will now post the results. 159, yes, 29, no. The motion to approve passes. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2 million for the purpose of the sewer collections system rehabilitation Phase 2 project, and all related incidental costs. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, or to take any action thereon. Article 15 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article, and it does require a two-thirds vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $2 million for the purpose of the sewer collections system rehabilitation Phase 2 project, and all related incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL. be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, and/or any other enabling authority to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I would once again refer people to the guide, but just want note that the, this future debt service will be funded from sewer fund receipts.
Any other discussion? Every number ready to move on Article 15? All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Again, it requires two-thirds to pass. Voting is now over. Time for voting has expired. We'll now post the results. Yes, 150. No, 34. The motion to approve passes. Article 16. See if the town will vote to appropriate and raise by taxation, transfer from any available funds, or issue notes or bonds, including borrowing from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, or any combination thereof, a sum of $33 million for the purpose of financing the construction of the PFAS Water Treatment Plant at the Memorial Beach well site, and an Iron Manganese and PFAS Water Treatment Plant at the Bigelow well site, and all associated work and apertuits nonsense, yes, right, related thereto, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1, Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. And to meet that appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectment is authorized to borrow said sum, and then the rest of the article deals with the borrowing mechanisms. Article 16 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Board of Selectment and FinCom recommend favorable action on this article, and it will require a two-thirds vote for passage.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $33 million, $33 million dollars for the purpose of financing the construction of a PFAS Water Treatment Plant at the Memorial Beach well site, and an Iron Manganese and PFAS Water Treatment Plant at the Bigelow well site, and all associated work and occurrences related thereto, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1, Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectment is authorized to borrow said sum and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Chapter 44 of the General Laws, and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority. That such bonds and notes are the general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectment determines that they should be issued as limited obligations, and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c). That the treasurer with the approval of the Selectment is authorized to borrow all or proportion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. That the town administrator is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Very quickly, I'll just read the backgrounds. PFAS treatment plan is needed to be compliant with state water quality regulations. Through the Mass Clean Water Trust, up to 19.8% of proceeds could be grant proceeds, and the remaining debt proceeds could be at 0% interest. New treatment required by the state, federal drinking water regulations, I'm sorry, as this will be in addition to the water system, we anticipate increasing operating costs upon implementation. And again, I'm sorry, it's anticipated, intended that the debt service will be funded from future water sewer proceeds. And I would just point out, town has already qualified for zero-interest loan, and has already been forgiven up to 19.8% of the principal of the project. Again, of the $33 million. $33 million is not, what you see here is $33 million less, with the interest, 0% interest in the interest proceeds from the state. So, it's $33 million minus whatever the other cost would be.
Any other discussion?
This being an enterprise account, our water rates are going to be affected by this one, is that correct?
That's correct. It's already figured into the 24 rate increase July 1, 15%.
So, the Water Sewer Commission is sponsoring this article. Moderator, through you, could I address anyone who cares to answer what our projected rates are based on this borrowing when it becomes effective?
We set the rates on an annual basis. We just recently set them at the April 6 public hearing, and the increase was 15% for water. Future rate increases get set annually. We review it annually as we go forward, but it could be similar numbers. It's hard to gauge exactly how much because our operating budget changes from year to year.
Mr. Moderator, I specifically asking the impact of the $33 million that you're asking for on the future water rates.
Yeah, already figured into the fiscal 24 rate, 15%.
I said, future, future rates.
I just said it'll be similar increases going forward annually. That rate will be set come April.
Well, I'm sure it will be, if not more.
We have a five-year rate plan, and it looks pretty similar. It's, it could range from 10% to 15% annually for the next three, four years.
Four more, correct?
Four more. Time to say.
Thank you.
Board of Ward, Water Sewer Commission, again, I just, oh, okay. I just wanted to let you know that the Water Sewer Commission has worked hard and diligently for this solution that the state and federal government is mandating. If this doesn't go through, I can't tell you what is going to happen. But I can tell you that we won't be able to provide water to the system from these wells if the state shuts us down. We're allowed to work with this plan to maintain funding from the state, which was already identified at 1, 0% interest, and at least 18.9% forgiveness on the debt, and possibly more. And we're in good position to do that. If this doesn't go through, again, I'm going to put it on the table. What do we do? We won't be able to pump water from the wells. We can provide water at costly amounts to you if you come to the station and pick it up. This is almost like a, you know, don't look at the alternative right now. We've tried to come with a reasonable, cost-effective solution. We've looked at all angles. We've talked about drilling additional wells. That could come online even if we were to drill a well and luckily get it. It has to be tested for years before you can put it online. We won't make, meet the state mandate of the PFAS regulation. So, I ask for your support on this.
Mr. Town Administrator.
Just one, one last thing. This, you know, I congratulate the Water Sewer Commissioners. They are in, right in the front row to be eligible for the Water Abatement Trust benefits. I know we've seen over the years many, many times that these programs are introduced by the state and federal government, and as time goes on, the benefits are reduced and reduced and reduced, and perhaps even eliminated. So, if you're not in on the ground floor of these programs, your benefits are very likely to be reduced if you don't take advantage of things by, you know, getting the front door. So, what you see here is as good as it's going to get, and as Mr. Gabor said, this is a mandate. This is a mandate. How do we deal with the mandate in the most cost-effective way?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Elaine Klitzbeck-Davies, 265, and 267, Hudson Road. I worked in the environmental field for many years. Not going to talk about money or statutes or mandates. This is a human health issue. He passed his test. We're all guilty of putting it into the environment with our hands and things like that, but this is for us, our children, our grandchildren, and I'll pay the extra rate increase as long as it promises to get us every fifth of state or federal money.
Thank you.
I bring you back to the Board of Selectmen. First, just a question for Tom. Approximately how many users, water users are there in Dudley?
So, the reason I bring this up is that roughly 2,500 users in Dudley were forced to approve a $13.2 million PFAS treatment plan in May of 2021, probably about the same cost relative to the number of users that we have. And I say forced because they knew as well as we know that it will be forced on us by the state and the federal government. And I agree with Elaine, this is bad. We didn't put it in the ground. It is in our water. It is happening. I'm sure you've read this everywhere around the state, everywhere around the country, and it's got to be removed, and this is the only way to take it out. To me, the fallback is people are going to be given cases of water. Just imagine what that's going to cost. I urge that we vote for this.
Okay, time for discussion has expired. We're now going to put Article 16 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 16, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Again, a two-thirds vote is required to pass. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired. We'll now post the results. 162, yes. 31, no. The motion to pass is approved. Article 17. See if the town will vote to transfer from sewer retained earnings, a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding fiscal year 2023 anticipated sewer appropriation deficits as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon. The table includes a list of seven accounts and their amounts for a total of $288,000. Article 17 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented in the warrant.
Motion and a second. Town Administrator.
This is, these are essentially end-of-year transfers, primarily, I believe, it was, you know, electric, electric costs this year. These are, electricity costs have been addressed, we think, going forward. Some good work with a lot of town officials, so we hope not to see these types of end-of-year transfers necessary. Once again, these are, these are costs that are being incurred, and they have to be paid.
Discussion.
Moderator, go on to speak. I have no idea if you, there we go, wait a second, but are we on the, let's see, on the website, I can apply to the town residential electricity rates which are lower than normal or whatever?
Yeah, no, this, this has nothing to do with that. The town, yeah, the town is a government agency, doesn't have the opportunity to do that. However, we do now, and we have entered into a longer-term fixed rate agreement on our old government electrical rates. So, we try to address this, but the town isn't eligible to participate in the residential aggregation program.
Okay. Lastly, I'd like to thank you, Moderator, for letting me up the microphone. I congratulate the people that are here tonight. It's a good turnout. That's what it's for, it's your money that's paying for this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Every number ready to vote on Article 17? All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired. We'll now post the results. Yes, 155. No, 24. The motion to approve passes. We have a motion and a second to dissolve special meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Those who no, the ayes have it. Meeting is dissolved. We will now move directly into the annual town meeting. So, we still have many articles to vote on here tonight, folks, so I request that you stay as long as you can. Article 1, reports to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, or take any other action thereon. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, the Board and FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the Finance Committee report.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
And the report was part of the package this evening.
Any other discussion? Every number ready to vote on Article 1? All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired. We'll now post the results. Yes, 127. No, 10. The motion to approve passes. Article 2. See if the town will vote to fix the compensation of elected officials, provide for a reserve fund, and determine what sum of money the town will raise in appropriations, including appropriations from any available funds, to defray the charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, or take any other action thereon. Article 2 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The Board and the FinCom Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate an omnibus budget in the sum of $57,911,496, an amount sufficient, sufficient to fix the compensation of elected officials, provide for a reserve fund, and to defray the charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Said sum to be raised as follows. Property, property tax, state aid, local and other receipts, $56,024,049. Sewer fund indirect costs, $817,679. Water fund indirect costs, $581,874, I'm sorry, $581,874. The, I'm sorry, our communication center. Our communication center dispatch center, $112,894. Donation from the Phyllis Foundation for the Police and Fire Stations, $200,000. Transfer from Waterways Improvement Fund, $15,000. Donations from Friends in the Library, $50,000. Transfer from sale of Filmer Building, $45,000. The transfer from Town Hall Stabilization Fund, $65,000, for a total of $57,911,496.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the town has complied with all state charter requirements for this budget process. Meeting has been posted, the warrant's been posted, the budget has been posted for, for several weeks. The town meeting book has been out there for, for over a week with explanations. Finance Committee held its public hearings in March, in March. The town meeting guide, as I mentioned, was posted on the website and on Facebook a week ago. It's been updated as necessary. The budget documents, document itself hasn't changed, just a review and recommendation to the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen in March and April. The proposed budgets are included when they hand out tonight. I would seek your guidance, Mr. Moderator, as to how in-depth it'd like me to get to be in light of the fact this information's been out there for so long.
I would just say if anyone has any questions, comments on the budget, to be specific, please Any other discussion, Mr. Moderator? I mean, Mr. Town Administrator?
I have nothing.
Thank you. We're ready to put Article 2 to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting has expired, will now post the results. Yes, 128, no, 28. The motion to approve passes. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate transfer from any available funds, a sum sufficient to operate the sewer enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, or take any other action thereon. Article 3 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and Board of Selectmen. The Water Sewer Commission, Board of Selectmen, and FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I would, I move that the town vote to appropriate from sewer revenues an omnibus budget in the sum of $4,265,010, an amount sufficient to operate the sewer enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I would point out the same as the previous article, Mr. Moderator. This budget has been discussed. Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, it's been posted since March online, so once again, if there's any, if anybody has any questions anybody might have.
Any discussion on Article 3? Here are none, we're ready to put Article 3 to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting has expired, we will now post the results. Yes, 120, yes, 128, no, 25. The motion to approve passes. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate transfer from any available funds, a sum sufficient to operate the water enterprise fund or for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024, or take any other action thereon. Article 4 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The Sewer Commission, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee recommend favorable action on Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from water revenues an omnibus budget in the sum of $3,44,887, an amount sufficient to operate the water enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I would just repeat, echo my comments from the past two articles.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 4? Here are none, we're ready to move to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is over. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. Yes, 134, no, 16. The motion to approve passes. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer with the consent of the Board of Selectmen to temporarily borrow a note or notes or make an inter-fund advance from available funds in anticipation of revenue from taxation, bonds, or grants, and to repay such sums within the current fiscal cycle, or take any other action thereon. Article 5 sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, the Board and the FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I reckon, I'm sorry, I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the consent of the Board of Selectmen to temporarily borrow a note or notes or make an inter-fund advance from available funds in anticipation of revenue from taxation, bonds, or grants, and to repay such sums within the current fiscal cycle or take any other action thereon. I'm sorry. Get rid of the "take any other action thereon." Thank you. Get rid of the trouble with town council.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
This is just an annual article that allows the treasurer to borrow with the event that the town needs cash flow.
Any other discussion? If not, we're ready to move on Article 5. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired will now post the results. Yes, 138, no, 15. The motion to approve passes. Article 6, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, 53E, one half, as most recently amended, to set FY '24 spending limits for such revolving funds as follows. And in the table, it lists six accounts and their spending limits, or take any other action thereon. Article 6 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board and the FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I would refer people to the background in the town meeting guide. This is an annual, annual, um, article that allows us to spend funds for certain things based upon, uh, fees collected.
Any other discussion? Here are none, we're ready to move on Article 6. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired will now post the results. Yes, 131, no, 10. Motion to approve passes. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from cable peg access account the following cable access budget in accordance with General Law Chapter 44, Section 53F and three quarters, or take any other action thereon. And then there is a table with the budget for cable access for a total of $70,000. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, the Board and the FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
A motion and a second, discussion.
This, uh, again, I refer you to the background here and the town meeting guide. This is an annual, um, article, again, that does exactly what reports do, it funds our cable access, um, department, and this, these funds are paid through the subscriber fees with your, with the cable company. So this is not being supported by the general fund.
Any other discussion? Here are none, we're ready to move on Article 7. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we will now post the results. 128, yes, no, 15. The motion to approve passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, acquire by gift purchase or other manner of conveyance, and then a list of parcels is listed in there. Two, discontinue parcels five and seven. Three, convey parcels three, five, and seven. Four, accept and/or dedicate as a public way parcels. And further, five, authorize a Board of Selectmen to act in such manner necessary as reasonable to carry out the purposes of this article, including but not limited to the acceptance, conveyance, discontinuance, dedication of any and all parcels as may from time to time be shown on the foregoing plan, and to execute any and all documents and instruments related thereto upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine appropriate, or take any action thereon. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and the Rede developmental Authority, the Board and the Finance, uh, Board favors, uh, action on the article. The Finance Committee refers to sponsor.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, I will read the background in the, uh, this is not something that we see often. The purpose of this article is to establish a legal right of way that coincides with the existing layout of Davis Street, and to accept the road as a public way for general municipal and or public way purposes. Currently, Davis Street crosses over privately owned property. This article will give the Board of Selectmen the authority to work with the private property owners to acquire their sections of property that are within the approved Davis Street
Any other discussion? I will further mention that this is going to require a two-thirds vote, as it is an I will also mention that the Webster Bylaw Committee met on May 8th to review, to review the bylaw amendments. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the next one. Okay, we're ready to put, uh, Article 8 to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Again, this is a two-thirds required vote for passage. Voting is now over. It was, it was a yes vote of 79%. The motion to approve passes, 120 to 32. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster general bylaws by inserting the following language to chapter 260-2, non-criminal disposition, or take any other action thereon. And then you have a list with the code chapter, subject, and fine. The article is sponsored by the Health Department. The Board of Selectmen and FinCom referred to sponsor on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made a second, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the purpose of the request is to enable the town to enforce Webster's current animal and water foul bylaw by adding the penalties to our non-criminal disposition enforcement program. Non-criminal disposition is a state statute that allows towns to enforce violations at the local level through a system of fines rather than having to pursue people in court. This is not a question on the regulation itself. The regulation exists. It's merely correcting, uh, an oversight, uh, of, this should have been included on the menu of non-criminal disposition, um, fines, or, and our non-criminal disposition bylaw requires the mention of this. The bylaw is subject to this, uh, and what those fines would be. The bylaw exists, the fines exist, this is merely putting it into another bylaw where it also exists, or it needs the resources.
Any other discussion? Here are none, we're ready to put Article 8 to a vote. I will mention that the Webster Bylaw Committee did meet, uh, on Monday, May 8th prior to the meeting tonight, uh, and they reviewed the Article 8, and the committee had no recommendations. Okay, ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. Opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, 131, no, 15. The motion to approve passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend Webster bylaw Section 217-1, 2, and 3 as follows. Uh, Section 10, and I'll just read the subs, include, uh, the establishment, 217-1, uh, the personal advisory board, therefore, herein, after call, the board shall consist of seven members, two appointed by the Board of Selectmen, two by the FinCom, two by the town moderator, and each will serve a three-year term, running consistent with the town's fiscal year beginning July 1. The town administrator and or his or her representative shall be the seventh member of the board, and the board shall be set up per Section 7-9G-F of the town's charter. And then 217-2, powers and duties, you'll strike out the following, uh, eight lines, and add the new personal advisory board, providing advice to the town administration. 217-3, the limits who may serve, you'll strike out the line, and no town employee will be eligible to serve on the personal advisory board. 217-4, invited of changes. Article 10 is sponsored by the personal advisory board. The Board of Selectmen and FinCom recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, right now, our current, uh, membership of the personnel advisory board are pointed in two-year increments, so they're overlapping two-year increments. This corrects that by making staggered terms. It also corrects some of the, uh, references to the charter and bylaws, and it reflects more accurately what the personnel advisory board role is today.
Any other discussion? Here are none, we're ready to move on Article 10. I will mention once again that the bylaw committee met, and after reviewing the article, uh, the committee has no recommendations. and after reviewing the article, uh, the committee has no recommendations. We're now ready to take Article ten to a vote. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One thirty-four, yes. Nine, no. The motion to approve passes. Article eleven. To see if the town will vote to replace in its entirety the existing Article four district regulations. Section six fifty dash twenty-one, District eight floodplain regulations with the following. And I will just state the subtitles of the different purposes. A, statement of purpose. B, definitions. C, district delineation. D, the designation of the Webster floodplain administrator. E, permits are required for all proposed development in the floodplain overlay district. F, assure that all necessary permits are obtained. G, floodway encroachment. H, encumbered A zones. I, drainage requirements in A O and A H zones. J, subdivision proposals. K, base flood elevation data for subdivision proposals. L, recreational vehicles. M, water course alterations or relocations of the river, lot, riverine areas. N, requirement to submit new tech data. O, variances to building code floodplain standards. P, special permits related to community compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. Q, navigation and greater restrictions section. R, disclaimer of liability. And S, separability section. If any section provision or portion of the bylaw ordinance is deemed to be unconstitutional or invalid, by accord, the remainder of the order shall be effective. Or take any action thereon. Sponsored by the Planning Board, the Board of Selectment, and FinCon refer to sponsor. This requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator. On May fourth, the Planning Board held a public hearing and voted to, um, to move this article forward, uh, written. It really, it's real function is to meet the federal emergency management changes in the floodplain law.
And I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this as, as presented.
Have a motion and a second, the recommendation of the Planning Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to move on Article eleven. All those in favor, one A. Opposed, two B. Again, it requires two-thirds vote for pass. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, one thirty, no fourteen. The motion to approve passes. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning bylaw, Article four, six fifty dash fourteen, District one, single-family residential. Section C, set back building lines by deleting the following language, which are strike through or take any action relative thereto. And in your handouts, you have the amended zoning bylaw with the strike through lines. And any amendment to the article. Or take any action thereon. The article is sponsored by the Planning Board. The Board of Selectment and FinCon refer to sponsor. Planning Board has a recommendation.
I'll move the motion as presented in the warrant. No, I'll move the motion, I'll make a motion to approve the article as presented in the warrant.
Thank you. Motion and second?
Again, on May fourth, the Planning Board met and voted to approve the article as presented on a four zero vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to move on Article twelve. All those in favor, one A. Opposed, two B. This required a two-thirds vote for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. One seventeen, yes. Twenty-six, no. The motion is approved. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning bylaw, Article four, six fifty dash fifteen, District two, agricultural, single-family residential. Section D, set back building lines by deleting the following language, which are strike through or take any action relative thereto, as follows. And in your package, you have the amended zoning bylaw. Or take any action thereon. Sponsored by the Planning Board. The Board of Selectment and FinCon refer to sponsor. And again, this requires two-thirds vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Board?
Again, it's, all these articles, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are the same and it's a meeting on the fourth and recommended passing as presented.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article twelve to a vote. All those in favor, one A. Thirteen. No, two B. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, one nineteen, no thirty. The motion to approve is passed. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning bylaw, Article four, six fifty dash sixteen, District three, multi-family residential, Section C, set back building lines by deleting the following language or take any action relative thereto, as follows. And your packets, you have the amended zoning bylaw. Or take any action thereon. Article fourteen, sponsored by the Planning Board. Board of Selectment, FinCon refer to sponsor. And again, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Board?
Again, Planning Board, on May fourth, voted four zero to, um, recommend passage of this article.
Planning Board recommends approval. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on Article fourteen. All those in favor, one A. Opposed, two B. Requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Voting is now open. The time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Yes, one twenty, no twenty-five. The motion to approve is passed. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning bylaw, Article four dash six fifty dash, six fifty dash eighteen, District five, business districts, Section B, set back building lines by deleting the following language or take any action relative thereto, as follows. And in your packets, you have the amended zoning bylaw. Or take any action thereon. Article fifteen is sponsored by the Planning Board. Board of Selectment, FinCon refer to sponsor. And Article fifteen, again, requires two-thirds vote for passage.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the article as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Board?
Planning Board, we have a recommendation to approve as presented.
Motion to approve. Planning Board recommends approval. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article fifteen to a vote. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. This requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we will now post the results. Yes, one twelve, no twenty-six. Motion to approve passes. Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning bylaw, Article four, six fifty dash twenty-one, District seven, Lake Residential, Section C, set back building lines by inserting the following language, which is in bold in your packets, and deleting the following language, which is strike through in your packets, or take any action relative thereto, as follows. And then your package has the amended bylaw. Or take any action thereon. Sponsored by the Planning Board. The Board of Selectment and FinCon refer to sponsor. And it's a required two-thirds vote to pass.
I move that the, uh, that the article D passed as written.
We have a motion and a second.
Planning Board, again, recommended approval as written.
Planning Board recommends approval. Any other discussion? We're ready to vote on Article sixteen. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results.
I will reach out to them first thing in the morning. That, that was FedEx.
Yes, one oh eight, no thirty-five. The motion to approve passes. Article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to amend the Webster zoning bylaws and zoning map so as to change the zoning district from general business B five to agricultural, single-family residential for all property shown on the attached segment of the town Webster zoning map attached here too and incorporated herein, being all land westerly of the center line of Thompson Road to the westerly line of the three ninety-five and northerly of the existing district boundary line to the northerly most corner of the assesses map, block thirty-three dash eight dash one dash zero. The purpose of proposed zoning amendment is to expand the current, um, ASFR district along Thompson Road or take any action relation thereto. Article seventeen is sponsored by a citizen's petition. The Board of Selectment and FinCon Committee defer to the petitioner and the vote would require two-thirds vote to pass. Planning Board, recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to make motion to approve the article as written.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Moderator, on the fourth, um, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. After hearing the discussion, that meaning the Planning Board voted four zero unanimously to recommend not approve of this article.
Planning Board votes, uh, recommends not approve. We have a motion and a second. We'll now open it up for discussion. The petitioner has requested a very brief presentation, which we are prepared to show and then have discussion and a vote.
Thank you. My name is Del Valeri and I reside at two ninety-eight Thompson Road. I represent the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association. The Thompson Road Neighborhood Association is a group made up of more than thirty-five households who live on Thompson Road in this surrounding area. The association was formed to preserve, protect, and improve our community. Next slide, please. To preserve, to preserve the history of Thompson Road. Two sixty Thompson Road was built in eighteen twenty-five. Next slide, please. Three oh two Thompson Roads was built in eighteen fifty. They were the only houses in that area until eighteen, nineteen thirty-eight. The remaining houses were all erected before nineteen fifty-seven. The proposed area was agricultural, single-family residential until spot zoning changed sometime in the late seventies. These nineteenth-century homes have labeled as historic and many places enlisted as such with the Massachusetts Historical Commission. A yes vote protects this historical area. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Furthermore, there is a historical cat app located on three hundred and three ten Thompson Road that is used by these farms and this cat, cat app is currently at risk of being destroyed. A yes vote protects these areas moving forward. Next slide, please. Protect against environmental impacts. This area is, is home to an extremely large ecosystem. Next slide, please. There is perennial stream, burning pools, wetlands, many species of animals and wildlife. The ecosystem is spread out over fifty acres of land can be further protected by an ASFR reclassification. The ecosystem is vital for the health of Webster Lake as perennial stream feeds into its great pond, making it even more important to attack. Next slide, please. To improve our home gardens, gain quiet enjoyment. Many of the allowed uses under B five are detrimental model to the environment and ecosystem but also to the residents of Thompson Road and the surrounding areas. Allowed uses that could have bought our homes are service stations, vehicle parking commercial, self-storage, laundry mat, auto sales, parking garage, trucking terminal, busing garage, just to name a few. All possible uses are high traffic, high impact, and high land masses that are better served downtown for the industrial areas. Next slide, please. With that, there are many vacant buildings and land areas and true business districts that could be used to develop these high-impact uses. Our proponents of this change from B five to ASFR are aware we need farmers in Webster to sustain. Reason does not eliminate this, but it does ensure that there are more stringent bylaws that will help preserve, protect, and improve our community. Please vote yes.
Mr. Moderator, it may be a question, actually, from Mr. Fran Boye, asking for to not, it seems a pretty decisive vote against it, under Planning Board. Can you give us some of the rationale? Why, why they oppose it?
Um, first, I'd just like to clarify, B five is not a spot zone there. B five is, is on both ends of this, this area that they've identified. It wasn't just a spot zone in the middle of agriculture. And, um, I think that the, the real reason why the Planning Board was, was a four to one vote against was more because there wasn't enough information provided by the proponent saying what was the benefit of doing this and, um, I just, um, the, the whole, um, anytime you change zoning, it creates other issues around. And there was no real description or in-depth review of what the bad parts of, of doing this would be. And if the presenter had come forward with more information of what the benefits would be for the whole town, then I think- would be for the whole town, then I think maybe the Planning Board would have a different opinion. But the idea that this was a spot zone that was just created in the middle of a, in, in the middle of a single-family residential is wrong.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Moderator? Discussion will go this way.
I think it's back there, listen, I would not be certain of Thompson Road. I think like all of you, when I come to a meeting and I'm being asked to make a vote, I'd like to be an educated voter. And so I try to do my due diligence ahead of time. I am one of 58 property abutters. And I got a notice that says the Planning Board was going to hold a public meeting on this zoning change. So I looked to see what was available. What was available was a map and proposal that's in front of us. I looked at the warrant, that's pretty much the same thing that we got. When I read this, there was no rationale. There was no detailed benefits, no data, no sources, nothing vetted. What are the cons of doing this? What are the pros of doing this? How does it fit into our redevelopment strategy? There's just no information. Why are you doing this? And then the one thing I could find was the bylaw which defined a, a agricultural single-family. And if I had a lot of money, I could buy that and I could put my hog farm up there. But I'm very happy to see that there was a one-page provided and I think what Mr. Valeri provided to us was, was very helpful. But, and one, I applaud the idea of taking history of the town into this context because I'm on the Historical Commission and I like it, but there's no sources and I'm not sure of some of this information here. I, I'm assuming you use the, the map or system to get this information, but I don't know. On environmental impacts where I did work for a while. Yes, the five lines which you read, there is an ecosystem, but there's no information on how it would be protected if I had my hog farm there. I prefer a T room. So I just can't make an educated vote on this. I might be voting and causing some awful thing to happen. And I urge you to vote no until we have more information.
Mr. Moderator, Jimmy Carrapines, went through the six KDA road. Have two properties on Thompson Road, 120 and 128 and 130. Commercial businesses that have been on Thompson Road for many years do pay a higher tax rate which benefits the town of Webster in, in many ways. I feel that if this, if this amendment passes, it will devalue the property for all the commercial owners or potential commercial owners on, on Thompson Road. And the only answer right now is a, is a no vote. Thank you.
Greg Linsky, 29, Blueberryville. Elaine's statements kind of partially answered my question. But it was stated that there are 35 households that are part of this association. How many are not that are in that area? How many households exist in the area that you encompass that are not, you know? Okay, I'm just curious to know if you even have the majority. There were 58 abutters, but, right. But are there, are, you know, maybe there are others who are here that are outside that abutter circle? So if we encompass all of that area, how many are not who pay rent?
We'll go right up here and then give a response. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a question for the Planning Board. I'm kind of familiar with the area, not familiar, but a little bit. And I'm trying to get in my head where the northernmost boundary is. Because if I understand that, there's a tremendous amount of businesses that already exist in this zone which will all be made into non-conforming use if this passes, which I think would have enormously detrimental effect on the town's economic base because those profitable businesses would be jeopardized in the future for expansion and continuation. Not to mention assigning new business in that, in that area. We don't have a lot of business in industrial zone that is in town. And we're trying to defer to higher taxation, stabilize taxes for residential members. So why would we give up valuable business grown area if already this predominantly commercial? And fruitlessly trying to change it back to residential? I don't understand what the point of this is. So how many businesses would be adversely affected?
You want, you want the Planning Board to answer that question? Because I really. Please, sir, yes. I think that there, the northernmost piece is 395. It goes all the way up to 395. Within that area, there are several business uses already, including the veterinarian, the old food club restaurant area, the little donuts shop next door, the commercial use for the cell tower that's on this property, the bulk storage facility that's there and plus obviously the hospital and other uses up there for hospitals. So all the commercial property that's already there would be rendered non-conformal?
Well, that's, I mean, that's again, is his only question. I don't think it would be rendered that way, but it would make it more difficult, especially for the redevelopment of the area of, of a spot, like the proponent of this is. So all of those things come into play and I think that that's where the article falls short. Doctors' offices. We do not have enough information.
Doctors' offices, the hospital, etc.
Well, that, that area, the hospital itself is not within this area. That area starts budding the hospital, goes all the way from the hospital to 395. So any of that area where the hospital, they want to expand or you want to put some doctors' offices in on Thompson Road, it does become more difficult for that redevelopment, which is again, the reason why the Planning Board voted four to zero to not, to not pass this order. Thank you.
So the cell tower is agricultural single-family residential. There are three businesses that would, that would be impacted by this change. It is the Kit Getz, the veterinary hospital, and Colomra. And the veterinary's office signed, the owner of the veterinary's office signed petition for this change. But we're trying to do this, we're trying to protect the ecosystem and try to check our homes from trucking and busing just to be able to come in. And we have no say in this, it's used by rights. So I don't want to wake up one day and see a busing terminal in my backyard, in anybody's backyard. And that is used by rights. That's what we're trying to protect. We, we are not attorneys, we are bodies trying to do our best to get information out there. We didn't know the process, we rushed through the process and this is the best we can do to shorten the time we have.
Mr. Moderator? So I didn't know anything about this issue until a couple days ago when the neighbors started posting on Facebook that they were somewhat secretive about it. Until today, they posted a document and it, it appears they're not being quite forthcoming as to what the purpose is. They seem to be bothered by the marina storage area over there and that things have been done that, that don't fit. And that seems to be the issue, but they haven't mentioned the marina storage area, which is already there. And I understand they have some legitimate rights, but I don't see how rezoning it solves the problems that already exist there.
George Barthie, 32, Union Point Road. The family that runs this business has been a long-time charitable contribution to the Town of Webster. They employ a lot of people, they do a great job, they provide access to Webster Lake, to the state body and water. They're responsible citizens, they bought the land intending to use for boat storage. We have a huge boat storage facility on Thompson Road that has a marine. If you want to avoid a bus terminal in there, just let them store their boats and you won't have any other businesses stored in there. If they paid for 35 acres and they've been paying taxes all these years, they're going to end up selling that land for some other use. It's not going to just sit empty. So I appreciate it if you would vote no on this.
Just, just a clarification. I heard for the first time, 35 people, there are really not that many on petition. I think it's eight copies or several people at different properties. So it's a much smaller universe, but I also agree reading the rationale, having worked at PA, it sounds like a limby, not in my backyard. And there are many other approaches to solving that and, and helping the people who are living there, if that's the issue, but let's be transparent.
I enjoy the. I'm going to have one speaker, then I'm going to let the petitioner close it.
I enjoy the erosion, I'm already driven. Just want everybody to know, some of that may be true of hope. But you do have town bylaws and regulations. You're supposed to send a noise that happened when you do any project in this town. I had to do it when I built my house. I was told not to buy that property because you can never build on it. There was only 43 feet of groundage where the bulk marine was pushed through by the town underhand. Okay, this is why you're here, listening to these people trying to defend their backyard because they weren't represented property by the town. Because they weren't notified in writing. They undo it with 43 feet of groundage instead of 50 feet of groundage, which nobody in this building will be able to build on their property whatsoever if it's governed by its own bylaws. If I made them, this would be fixing an injustice and not letting them expand on the injustice that happened again. They bought it right away later on, which still doesn't give them the access because they had to go to some of these guys' yard that they bought to try to make it look good on paper. What they're using for access in there was only 43 feet. It's a D, it's bad. And it's sad that it has to come from the town, that the people of the town to fix the injustice. And that's a feeling has to be done.
And this is the, this is not attacking any of the standards. This, this has nothing to do with that. This, they can expand and work, but they have to go through processes, but they, I, they already have their application in, so this change is not affecting.
Kristen Muller, 298 Thompson Road. I just wanted to address the spot zoning, that somebody said that it was not spot zoning. I'm unsure of how that cannot be spot zoning. 306 Thompson Road is B5, 302 is agricultural single-family residential, 300 and 298 are all B5. It basically went around one house and then down up to 395. There are two historical homes on this, this area. As it was mentioned, there's a historical path path. Very concerned that someone from the historical department doesn't understand that we should be preserving that area. There was a railroad that used to run in front of it, there's a path that was used to trans, transverse between all of those properties that were on there. And again, the cell phone tower is on agricultural single-family residential. That actual property back behind, which is 210R, is actually half B5 and half agricultural single-family residential. Not sure how that happened, but there was spot zoning that was done back in the 70s or around that time because there is one house that's just footprints are dried out that is left as agricultural single-family residential and the rest was rezoned with B5.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of Article 17, 1A, all those opposed 2B. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we will now post the results. Seventy-three yes, eighty-three no. The motion to approve is passed. Article 18. And before we start Article 18, the town administrator had one comment to make, please, before we vote on the last article and then we can leave.
Right, and I know it's going to be an exodus after the last article, but a lot of work goes into these town meetings and you may not look it, but it's a tremendous amount of work over a very long period of time. And so we can't thank everybody, but I wouldn't fault our department, but particularly our assistant town administrator, Mr. Courtney Friedland, and our finance director, Tim Hill. Did a tremendous amount of work and thanks, Tim, for your comments tonight. It's been very, very helpful.
Article 18, to see if the town will vote to accept the extension of Oakwood Drive from STA 12+50 to 22+13.19 and approve it as a town road or take any action thereof. Article 18 is sponsored by Citizens Petition. The Board of Selectmen and Fitcom refer to the petitioner. Is the petitioner here to motion? I'm sorry, in your honor.
I'm glad, this is the last one for everybody. My name is Joyce Mivadi, everyone seems very worried about this article. It's not for the pay, or who is all paid and not done.
Excuse me, but right now we just need a motion to approve the article if that's what you wish to do. Motion to approve, and we have a second. Okay, now we can discuss.
I have to say all that.
That's okay, take your time.
Anyways, I'm going to estimate the IFO, Oakwood Drive is all paid with the second half of the extension. I committed, I completed all the requirements by the town, the plans were approved, everything. And I would really like to go follow with this to help all of the residents who have been very helpful with me to support this. So I would appreciate your support and acceptance of the town road.
Thank you. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Yeah, the Planning Board recommends acceptance of the article.
The Planning Board recommends acceptance.
Mrs. Schreddi did everything that she could possibly do. It's been a long, long process for her to get this done after her husband passed away. And she's done a great job in getting everything done, so I would certainly recommend approval of the article, please.
Okay, any other discussion? No, we're ready to put Article 18 to a vote. All those in favor of 1A, opposed 2B. This is a simple majority vote. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we will now post the results. 100, yes, seven, no, the motion to approve passes. We have a motion to dissolve, the meeting's are dead, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Please turn in all your twickers. They won't open the garage door. Turn them in.